Good evening, I call this meeting to order here on March 10th on a very warm day. Mr. Kosher, would you please take attendance?
Olson.
Here.
Phelan.
Here.
Skelton.
Here.
Bosward.
Here.
Winiger.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, if you could, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, any visitors who wish to address the board may do so, we ask that you sign in when you enter the room and please list the topic. If you have not done so, please approach the podium and do. I ask that you refrain from listing any student by name or any personnel by name. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? As a reminder, no action will be taken this evening.
We got you under this bed.
Alright, seeing none, do we have any tanager happenings this evening?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on here to approve agenda and conflict disclosures. Item A, are there any changes to the agenda, Dr. Alvey?
Nope, just as posted.
Great, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
First by Mark, second by Carol, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion passes. Next up here, we have indication of conflict of interest per South Dakota codified law three dash two three. This is Rachel and I have none.
Carol, I have none.
This is Jake and I have none.
Mark and I have none.
Mike, I have none.
Great, thank you. Next up here, we have our consent agenda. Item A here, approval of our minutes, resignations, new hires, open enrollment, and bills. First up here, we have our February 10th meeting resignation, we have Hannah Kerwin, title, Audrey Jobe, middle school council, student council, Tanya Miller, high school science. New hires, Kaylee Olson, sped assistant, Sarah Armbrus, family consumer science teacher, Louis Budmeyer, head football, Amelia Howard, head dance, and Sydney Kellin, special education teacher. Would you like anything to be pulled from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve. First by Mike.
Second.
Second by Mark, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull same sign, motion passes. Next up here, we are not in need of any unfinished business, so we'll be moving on here to new business. We have several lease agreements tonight, so we'll take one by one here. The first up being approval of school lease agreement for Camp Invention. Hello?
Hi, I'm Mindy Whistler, I teach third grade at the elementary school. I'm requesting to use the elementary school to bring back Camp Invention. We took a year off, we had it for seven years, so I'd like to bring it back to the youth of Vermillion. Hannah was in charge and then she moved away, so I will be taking over as the coordinator. I would need four classrooms and open space, the playground. I did send Dr. Alvey the insurance policy that camp has. We're just asking that the fee would be waived for us to use the elementary school for a week from June 2nd to June 5th.
Excellent, excited to see that be brought back. A lot of kids like that.
Yeah, hopefully.
So, Mr. Alvey, we'd have the custodial fees attached with that if necessary?
I wouldn't imagine there'd be much because it'd be the same kids coming in and going in, using the bathroom, but it'd pretty much be against, it's a summer project.
Right, yep.
It's been, I think in the past, it's been very well attended, the weeks that we've had it, so it'd be good to have it back.
And like I said, I haven't really pushed super hard this year, just trying to bring it back and the new building, kind of seeing how it goes. So hopefully we'll have about 25 campers, I'm hoping for, so. Can you remind me what grades your target and what the students do while they're at camp? Camp Invention, we're pushing for, it'll be kids going into second grade and into fifth, up to fifth grade, would be sixth graders, so kind of keeping it the older kids. Camp Invention's just a week of where they get to explore, they send us all the materials, they get to take things apart, build things, create things. So it's just a whole week of exploring and learning about different inventors.
I want to say, great job in the past with the camp. Our kids have gone several times and really gotten a lot out of it, glad to see it coming back. How would parents find out more if they wanted to register?
I've sent flyers home, so another flyer should have came home today, and then I know Nicole put it on Facebook, since I'm not on there for the website. We do have flyers and just kind of word of mouth again, trying to get it out there.
And how many students are you hoping for?
Twenty-five. At least 25. You know, we've in the past had up to like 50 or 60, but just as the first year coming back and just kind of getting used to it, I don't want it to be super huge and not knowing how everything's going to work out with the new building and logistics, so.
It's a great idea.
Kids do love it, so it's a week of fun.
Thank you, Ms. Whistler. Next up here, we have item B, which is approval of school facilities lease agreement for the PTO carnival, coming up here Friday, March 21st, and I believe, James?
So we're just asking for use of pretty much the elementary gyms, both of them, for the PTO carnival. It's our second largest fundraiser that we do throughout the year for the PTO, and we're asking for the fees to be waived for that.
Excellent. I'm sure the high school is happy to have it out of there. And I think parents be patient as everybody navigates the new space and how that'll flow, so.
Seemed appropriate to have it at elementary, it's an elementary-type activity as it is.
Yeah, just like always, you know, this is another thing that brings a lot of folks to our school and great partnership with the PTO, so we don't see anything being an obstacle to this. Same as all of our lease agreements, if there is cleanup afterwards, obviously you guys do a good job of cleaning up, but our folks often have to do the sanitization of the tables and the areas that kids eat in, so there would be some small fees potentially that would have to be transferred over, but it's never been a problem in the past.
Are you gonna have cotton candy?
I just received all the supplies for it today.
Do you need another volunteer?
Yes, you will be there, Mark. He's been trained well.
Can always use extra volunteers.
Alright, any other questions, Jim? Perfect, thanks for coming up. We're gonna have this place booked up here. Next up here, we have item C, which is approval of school facilities lease agreement for the Vermillion Booster Club. Mr. Cleveland.
Hello, I'm Joe Cleveland, I'm here on behalf of the Booster Club. I think that Andy has probably been in contact with most of you already, but I have his little letter here and happy to read it off. The Booster Club is requesting usage of the Vermillion High School gym in Collins on April 26th of 2025 to host our Hall of Fame banquet. In the past, we've hosted this dinner at a venue that could accommodate the numbers we anticipated. However, this year, due to our two honorees, we'll need a venue that can meet our needs and accommodate a much larger number of community guests. As a Hall of Fame celebration, we will have a social hour and are serving meals followed by a program. During the celebration, we're making a request to have consent to serve alcohol. As a board, we're fully aware that this may appear as a conflict of interest by having alcohol on site. We can assure you that we will have all the necessary accommodations to ensure the alcohol is only available to those of legal drinking age, as we will have be hiring professionals from the community and working with law enforcement to make sure everyone is safe. Our board is made up of volunteer parents, educators, school staff, professionals in the community, and all the conversations regarding this request have been long thought out and discussed in detail. We're doing our very best to highlight and celebrate the careers of Gary Culver and Kirk Hogan and maintain the integrity and transparency of this event and the above requests. We have filed the necessary paperwork with Vermillion School District as well as the City of Vermillion and paid all required fees. Andy won't be here, present obviously today, because he's out of town. We understand the city council's decision will lay heavily, sorry, this council's decision will lay heavily on the decision that will come, input from the school board, basically will lay heavily on what the city council decides at their upcoming meeting. We thank you in advance for your consideration for this request and are happy to discuss any questions or details you may have regarding this event. Sincerely, Andy Meredith, Booster Club President.
So the alcoholic beverages, as I understand it, was going to be beer and wine, is that correct?
That is my understanding, I can verify that, that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Just a little bit of history, last year was the first year that we've really allowed alcohol on campus, it was allowed outdoors, it was allowed in the parking lot for the all-school reunion last year, and it went fine, we didn't have any issues with that. But this will be the first time that we've allowed it inside, if that's, if you choose to move forward with that. Clearly, the Booster Club is a great partner and done great things for the facilities and our athletes and things, so there's really no worries there, or the cleanup, I'm sure it won't be an issue. It's just whether or not, you know, that's, some schools do this and some schools don't, obviously, because of the, this basically, the picture of having alcohol at a school function. So that's really what you'll be debating tonight and then be able to offer, Joe, and then the city, I'm sure, will be following suit with a malt liquor license, which would allow beer and wine to be purchased, or I guess, I don't know if it can be purchased or if it has to be a donation at the, at the event, but that'd be something that the city would certainly work out with the Booster Club, so.
I take it, just because of the size you're looking at the high school, or are you looking at it routinely being at the high school in the future?
I mean, ideally, depending on the size, we would like to have it there, I mean, if we were only expecting, like last year's event, a smaller number, we could do it at another venue, but even with that, I can tell you, it was pretty crowded. And with the two honorees this year, we're expecting it to be much larger more possibly.
Regarding, on the letter, it said that you're hiring professionals from the community and working with law enforcement to make sure everyone's safe, what does that look like, or what kind of, like professionals, or what do you envision as the process there?
Well, I guess I would have to defer to Andy and maybe get back to you on that answer, but I do know that he's been in contact already with the chief of police as far as if we host an event like this. How do we work that out? How do we get the correct professionals there? We want to make sure everything is, you know, above board and there isn't any question as to what's happening on school property, basically.
Have you guys done beer and wine events in the past? I assume another venue where maybe they already had licenses?
Yes.
Ever had any issues with it?
We have not had an issue to date.
Wouldn't expect so, but.
I'll be honest, when I first heard about it, I had some reservations. I don't know where they went.
Any other further questions? Alright, do you want us to do a separate motion on any of these? Keep going. Keep going for a moment, like a separate one?
Another question that I would have regarding the alcohol, my feeling would be, I just, I'm not crazy about the look of it inside of the building, but obviously if you haven't had issues, then that, that kind of takes care of that part. I don't know, other districts that have allowed it, has there been issues with increased usage amongst students or incidents or anything that you're aware of, rather us not be the case study, so like, what have other schools done?
In our, my previous world, we had examples where this was used, because this was, our school gym was the only facility in town. And so you either had a very small group, or you, if you wanted anything with a couple hundred people, you had to go to the school. But very similarly, the city was behind it and then the appropriate people were hired. The only ten, what you tend to do is you do have a bigger mess. Whenever there's alcohol involved, you got a chance that there's, somebody's gonna overdo it, and you're gonna have stuff that's in your toilets, or you're gonna have stuff on your walls, and, you know, that's just the fact, it's, some people treat it like a bar. But the vast majority of people that attend these events are there for the right reason, to celebrate appropriately and to honor the folks that are there. They'll, they'll do their social time at this event, they'll get serious downtown, you know, so that's what we would fully expect. But my, my experiences have always been positive because of the preparation and the groups that were involved took care of the problem, so.
I think it is different than, let's say weddings, you know, we allowed it last year, and it's the first time I, we've allowed it in my 10 years, I guess, alcohol hasn't been used, but I don't see us doing a lot of weddings, so. Public School Foundation Booster Club, I do agree, I think it's your, the type of people that we're bringing in, it's their school.
Yep.
A lot of alumni coming back for it, ideally, so hopefully we'll treat our school well.
Yep. So long as it was like, that's what my question was on the professionals and kind of what that looks like, because that would take care of a lot of potential.
Right.
Okay, you've had too many, let's, let's cut you off now and kind of protect some of those things that could potentially go wrong, so.
I can't speak for everyone, but myself, I plan on being there, I'm not a professional, but I plan on being in the area and, you know, I'd set another set of eyes that can keep things under control, which I don't expect it to be.
Now, I imagine, it isn't stated in here, but clearly there'll be a meal involved with this as well, so, you know, obviously there'll be, set up a takedown of meal, and then there'll be some social time, and perhaps there'll be some time that they could cut off the drinks before, late in the evening, they're only going until 10:30, and maybe not even that long, by, you know, by the time this gets going, so. Those are all things that will be favorable for, for the event, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe while we have the moment, we can congratulate Kurt and Gary.
Yep.
On their nominations, so.
Honorees, yep.
Very nice, thank you. Alright, next up here then, we have item D, which is approval of the bid of the bus contract. Mr. Kosher?
We went out to proposals, you might remember this, a couple months ago, authorized to go out for proposals for our bus transportation services. This was not a strict bid, so it was not just a financial thing, we looked at the entirety of the proposals. We did receive two, just evaluating them, they were very close financially, and based on the financials that came in and the rest of the proposal, along with our current relationship with our provider, Harlow's, we bring that forward for recommendation for approval tonight to continue that relationship.
If you had any particular questions, we could put Ken on the spot. Ken is from Harlow's, he's, he's our regional director here, and he comes down and visits us once in a while and works with us on projects or other things, so if you had any bus-related questions, but otherwise, he's here to do business tonight, and then he's got other business in the area tomorrow, so. He has not, you've never seen, probably met Ken before in the past, so that's.
Here's a quiz then, how many years have we been with Harlow's?
Well, I believe it's three.
Yep.
Three?
Well, it's maybe four.
Yeah, if you remember, it was three years ago that ABC busing that we'd had for several years prior to that ended up dissolving their bus part of their corporation and just stuck with trucking, and Harlow's came in, who's a big player in the Midwest for busing, and it stayed us out Dakota and regionally, so.
Yeah, it's been great with you, we appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you for taking care of our kiddos and keeping them safe. Very good. Any questions on the bus contract? Alright, next up here, we have approval of an MOU with probably BYSL for Barstow Park use, so. Kurt, welcome back.
Thank you. Kurt Nelson, here representing the Vermillion Youth Soccer League tonight, I'm the president. And first off, I want to say thank you for the use of the schools, for the youth soccer tournament that we hosted. So last time I was here, we were talking about that, really successful event, the facilities were outstanding, we hosted 29 teams. Vermillion had about eight of those teams, ages eight to 14, boys and girls. The school was filled, and so yeah, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, and it was a really, really great event, I was really impressed and heard a lot of good things from the community, from visitors. We had a ton of volunteers from some USD athletic teams and citizens of Vermillion. So it's great to see all that traffic. Amy was there, helping out with athletic training, and just a total group effort to have a successful event, so really appreciate that. What I want to talk about tonight, the MOU, we've been working on with administration here. Essentially, we've, we've been really lucky to have a really strong partnership with you all in the, in the past. We've utilized the combination of spaces between Barstow Park and the high school. We serve about 250 kids each spring and fall, so about 500 registrations total throughout the year. Saturday mornings, when we have games, again, the park spaces are filled up, you know, probably up to like a thousand people in these spaces, and it's just really fun to see all of the activity and people outside just enjoying soccer and the parks. One thing we've been, so as we've been discussing, the field usage, obviously the boosters put in some really nice fields at the high school, we've been utilizing those throughout some of the construction of the new elementary school. There's been a lot of use on those facilities, and we really appreciate all the time and effort that the facilities crew puts into maintaining those throughout the, throughout the year. And what we're proposing with this MOU is to secure some space in the Barstow Park area that's being unused, so outside of the football space, and really kind of around that northwest corner, where we can have a 10-year agreement, which would allow us to kind of invest in that ground, improve it, make it so it's more usable for soccer, and really kind of take some of that maintenance facilities burden off of the high school grounds where you've got track going on in the spring and stuff like that, and we don't want to have little kids running around javelin and all that kind of stuff, so. The, the new school, I like a lot of things about it. The playground is awesome, and when we have like a thousand people at, on Saturday morning or during practice times, there's always kids running around, climbing on anything and everything, so having a playground space there to keep them occupied will be, I think, a huge hit with our constituents. There's restroom facilities there, plenty of parking, and then some really nice shade too, with some of the mature trees that we don't get at the high school for some of those longer kind of tournament days, things like that. So, really, yeah, we're trying to get this agreement with the schools, and we also have an agreement with the city for the next five years to work on maintenance and some of the things that they've been so gracious to provide for us. And really, I see this as a partnership to, yeah, develop the land, secure some space for soccer, and continue our partnership into the future.
Maybe just to add on to that a little bit, we've met, I don't know how many times, several times with the city, Parks and Rec folks, Jason, of course, the, our athletic director, and Kurt's team about the youth programs, and those of you who've had groups in soccer, have gone by the Barstow Park in years past, it's been awful busy and been awfully nice. Well, Kurt and his folks have found a way to redesign some of the fields there and maybe turn them in different directions, and in partnering with the city, the city would take out a tree here or a tree there to make some really good playing surfaces for them, with also maintaining the rest of the trees and the park ambiance, so that other parkgoers or the school can use these facilities for whatever they need, but on weekends, the park would be available to really be a soccer complex. And the diagram that was in your, your board pack, it really illustrates the work that can be done. So by agreeing tonight to continue on with the MOU, that just gives us the permission to work more closely with Kurt and his folks, and then with the city to say, hey, let's go ahead and take out those trees and replant some on the end where we'd still have shade or, you know, replace something here or there, and then it allows Kurt and his folks to start investing some dollars into the park to get the surface really where it needs to be, to get rid of gopher holes and, you know, do some work with some of the grass and some things down there, so. I think it could be a great complex for long into the future, but we just are asking for permission tonight to move forward and continue that discussion, so.
By the way, thank you for a great tournament.
Appreciate it.
It was a lot of fun.
Yes, appreciate it.
Maybe next time we can beat South Sioux.
Most of the boys did, really.
We had a couple teams that did, yeah.
I just have a couple questions on the diagram in Area 3 here. That looks like it's, the U-12 field is running right up to those trees along either side. Do you know, or have an idea if those would be able to stay? I know you'd need some clear space around the field as well.
Yes. So we did meet with Parks and Rec on the tree space, and really how I have this designed is, is that we could do a combination of fields kind of in Area 2 and 3 and rotate them, so just overuse in the goal areas in particular is a, is a big problem, so being able to rotate those as kind of depicted with the dotted and the solid lines will be key. So the, the city has said that they're, they could provide a lot of these tree services, a lot of the trees, I do have a list, but, and I've pulled up right now, I think it was about nine trees that were affected, and I, I want to say, most of them, like six or seven were ash.
Okay.
That needed to be removed anyways, and then there was, I believe, three trees that were smaller that the soccer club would pay to relocate.
Yeah, I know, they planted a bunch of those a couple years ago.
Yep, around the field spaces, so. And then there's a disc golf pad in the middle there that would need to come out.
I've thrown a lot of disc golf frisbees into some of those trees, so. I have a relationship built up with some of those trees, just want to make sure that...
Yeah, it's a handful of trees, a lot of them needed to come out anyways, and then we're gonna relocate where we can, I think it was maybe two or three that needed to come down outside of that.
There's an area in yellow?
The football field.
Oh, that's, sorry. Yeah, that's our existing middle school football field, so that gets, you could, and this is an older picture from, you can tell from the buildings, but this year, we invested, you invested a lot of effort in terms of overseeding fertilizer and water of that, so if you were taking a picture of that now, you wouldn't see any brown spots. That, that football field had a...
That's a functional field that we use.
Yep, yep. And then naturally, the city uses the softball park next to it, of course, so.
I've talked a little bit about this with Dr. Alvey, bathroom, so I think right north of Area 1, there's a bathroom complex there, and there's the ones that the city hasn't like maintained, is it maybe due to vandalism, which is kind of by Area 3, by Fish Park, basically. Is that one looking at in the future through the city going away?
Yes. Yeah, they, they don't plan to, the, the one that's closest to our parking lot, to the north side of our parking lot at the school, will likely be vacated because of just its, its use and it's, it's been vandalized kind of heavily, so they'll go all the way to the west will be where the, the bathrooms over there will be the main bathrooms.
Sure, just, and they're just single bathrooms over there?
Yep.
Yep. And then I think if I recall, the Fish Park is going down below the hill?
Yes.
For the pickleball courts as well?
Correct. It's, the, the plan of the city is to improve the parks below the hill in Cotton Park area, and so they were gonna take the functional, what everybody calls the Fish Park, from, which is on the north side of our parking lot, and relocate that as soon as the summer, yeah. So it'd really be just our playground equipment that will be out there after this point.
And I believe the restrooms you were speaking of do not have utilities?
Right, that are like...
It's the big, it's the big problem, yep.
And I think I've always been talking about, you know, future, future expansion for the school to add the gym that we didn't get to do, but there would still be room even with developing soccer fields, and it's nice with soccer fields versus putting a baseball field in, there's less infrastructure when we're talking sod and watering, long-term looking at, and it would be nice to, what's that, which is a softball field or a baseball field there, would be nice to be able to expand it to be able to play high school there too, as we look at high school softball being added.
The city will be, of course, adding some baseball softball fields to the complex out at the Powell addition, where the new law enforcement center is, at some point in the future, that's their long-term goal, so we'll continue to have discussions about the city's partnerships with us and the usage of those facilities as long as they need them.
And then, good for the PE etc. to use the soccer fields, right?
Yep.
Or recess?
Spread them out.
Spread them out, keep them good, keep them good. Fence and min, spread them out. Awesome. I think it sounds, I think, wonderful, especially with what was talked about as the Powell addition and kind of how that's evolved on what the future was looking like for soccer over there, and good use of our green space, staying as a good park, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Thank you, Kurt. Right, next up here, then, we have Item F, the set first negotiations, meeting date and time. It'll be March 11th, which is tomorrow at 4:00 PM. So there's a correction from what is on your agenda tonight. So again, that is tomorrow, March 11th, at 4 o'clock at the high school. All right, so now we have several lease agreements to approve. Would any of them like to be pulled as a separate motion? Okay. I would then take a motion to approve Items A through E.
So moved.
First by Mark, second by Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Thank you. Next up here, then, we have reports. Dr. Elde?
Yeah, just, you know, this time of the year, we're getting through with our winter sports. So we want to thank all of our coaches and athletes and advisors and, of course, the parents for all the outstanding work for the activities and the great seasons we've had this winter. Parent-teacher conferences numbers, we're really, at the elementary was about 82%, which is pretty close to where we normally are. Middle school is at about 27%, which I don't know if that's too far off from normal. The spring conferences are a little less attended. And the high school had about 403 conversations, so you can imagine what that looked like. It was probably less than 40%, probably closer to middle schools in terms of the number of parents that came through. But the ones that came through got the chance to see four or five, six teachers at a time, which was good. As you know, we've put a considerable amount of effort with Nicole doing such a good job with our Facebook. So she did a little review of that for us here this week and talked to us about the touches. She puts out generally a couple, two to three Facebook posts a week on the school district's posts, besides what the Booster Club puts out there. And so far, the tally has been that we've had 56,227 touches or views of our Facebook data that's going out. So what a great place to put our kids in place, what's going on, or news information about the district, or upcoming events, the fact that we're hitting not only people in our community, but as far away as Sioux City, Sioux Falls. It's pretty much in our region, you know, relatives in the area. But we're getting a lot of hits on that, which is really good. This time of year, we're often, we're really proud to talk about our employees of the year. This is the time of year where we talk about our classified and our teacher of the year candidates. And our candidates this year for the elementary school, Kalin Wagner, who's an SLPA, was designated as our classified employee of the year. And Laura Chandler was, our early childhood was out of our teacher of the year from our elementary group. At the middle school, Teresa Stevens, who's a special ed para for us, was our classified employee of the year. And Audrey Jobe, who teaches science for us, got the honor of the teacher of the year. At the high school, Yiping Wang is a special education para for us, and she was honored with our classified employee of the year. And Kami Dibley was honored as our teacher of the year for the high school. So three great teacher reps and three great para reps and classified reps. And like we said, when we announced these winners at each of the buildings, the fun thing about doing these is that you often, as an administrator, you think you see these things and hear these things in the building. But when you see and hear the actual applications that people wrote about these fine people and others, remember, we, this was a, this was funneled down to earn this honor from these folks here. There was many other people that were nominated, but to see the things that their colleagues or students wrote about them is pretty heartwarming and well-deserved for these folks. And then eventually, it was whittled down that Kami Dibley was honored as our district teacher of the year. So congrats to all of those folks. They'll be honored again at the end of the year, at our end of the year celebration. And Kami will, of course, be honored at the graduation this year, as usual. Just because we have been talking about this, our cell phone discussion continues to be a topic in our buildings. Once in a while, we talk about what we're seeing and hearing. Of course, you've been talking a little bit about it at our board meeting, but just a reminder that we've sent out some information to our parents about the education side of cell phones, our social media usage, where we did the workshops with parents, students, and staff in January. We did survey our staff, and 52% of the ones that responded back to our survey reported they liked our current policy as it is versus 41% that said they'd like to see our policy change. So they're relatively close there. But certainly, one area that people thought we could tighten up was just making sure that the cell phones are not used in class for usage. That's why we give them laptops and they have the devices there. So there shouldn't really be a need to have their laptop, or excuse me, their phones out during the conversations that are going on in class. But more to come on that. I attended some, recently, some sessions on cell phone usages and social media platforms in schools, and I'll be sharing that with the board at some future meetings here. And the last couple of things, Envision Ed, our Finland project, is in its final week. Some of you have already committed to coming and help with the judging, which is the 20, let me get my dates right here.
25th and 26th.
25th and 26th and 28th, the Wednesday and Friday of the month here. What a great deal that's been going on, watching these kids work on these outdoor learning spaces for our facilities, has been pretty neat. And there's some really good ones, and some that are very manageable in terms of that you could see being placed on our campuses because they're realistic and they make sense and they would be able to offer what we're looking for. So more to come on that at the end of the month, naturally. Just a reminder too, to our folks at home, that we get out early on Wednesday for our spring break. Our staff will have some professional learning time, but there'll be no school for Thursday and Friday with the spring break. And unfortunately for our students, we're getting to that point in time where smarter balance assessments are getting close. Our test window is the end of March here through the first week of May. So for folks at home, this is that chance to ask your kids in 3, 4, 5, 8, and 11, what their cycle would be for their testing. We'll be sending those dates home, naturally, so parents can plan. But if you can avoid missing days for doctor's appointments or dentist's appointments or things on those windows would be great, so we don't have so many makeups. But more importantly, lots of rest, you know, getting good breakfast and things in you for the kids, because, of course, we want to see the kids perform well on those smarter balance tests. This is the last year that our high school kids will take smarter balance. Starting next year, the ACT will be considered a high school exam for proficiency. So that will be an interesting transition for our high school folks starting next year. So, anyway, great things to report and, yeah. The hard part now, we'll be getting through the week with this great weather, so.
But we don't have to worry about calling off school, maybe Friday, because the storm will happen on spring break.
We'll be in good shape, yep.
Sorry, kiddos. Excellent. Well, perhaps Carol, if you're ready, maybe first thing under school board report, we can start off with our survey report?
Sure.
Does that work? Or do you want to do reports first to prepare?
No, that's fine.
You're good?
Perfect.
Yeah, what you see in front of you is some information that came from our staff survey, which was put out right before the beginning of the winter break. We did give staff some extra time to complete this. And I've compiled some comparisons of results from the year prior. So we've had 124 respondents this year. I think last year, we had 131, which is a good number. I think in past years, we often had under 100. So a lot of people participated and I appreciate that. We had pretty consistently stayed the same with the level agreements of some statements that included being inspired by the vision and the mission of the district, having resources needed to do one's job, enjoying coming to work, believing that our district is meeting the needs of our students, feeling that one's contributions are valued and that the district provides a safe and secure learning environment. So from last year to this year, those were pretty steady. But, you know, it's one year, so it's a little bit difficult to establish some trends there. Not on the page that you have in front of you, which just includes this year and last year. But I do have some information that includes data from 2021 and 2022. And I can compile that and give that to you as well. There are some trends that are moving downward that I think are important for us to take a look at. So as far as some satisfaction with school board or other entities that our staff work with in their day-to-day work. So I guess I'd like us to take a closer look at the data that we have. It's my understanding that maybe four years ago, we started being more intentional about our surveys and giving them at a
Same time.
Consistent time and being consistent with the questions that we're asking. So I think that we're at a point where we can look at trends. So I'll take any questions, but I'm hoping that we can continue our conversation as we look closer at these.
I can't remember the total of comments, but there are several pages worth of comments, so good information to look at as well. Any quick overview questions for Carol? Appreciate for taking over that from Shane and navigating that Qualtrics university platform. So thank you for trying for that.
That is certainly something that we can discuss as well, is, you know, how to best continue, continue.
The platform.
The platform and making sure that we're, you know, making the best use of our time.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Carol, for that. Any other school board committees?
Associated School Board.
Microphone.
Associated School Board, thanks everyone for all of their emails. Keith Larson just is about to finish his first year lobbying, and I think he's done a pretty darn good job. It's been a tough year, but he's fighting the tough fight.
Mark and I also had a negotiations personnel meeting as well as a building meeting as well, kind of looking at some of the capital plans, a little bit of the overview on some of the sheds that were completed. Maybe you can bring that in the packet next time, I guess.
Yes.
I didn't think about that. Those are good pictures.
Yeah, sorry.
Showing the sheds, and I parked in front of them last weekend too, so it worked out well for that. I was curious, have we, have we had staff starting to park now where Fish Park is, I guess? Like, because we're out of parking, we've just made that into a parking lot extension?
Well, unofficially.
Unofficially, I wonder.
Yeah, I think, I think what that happens is some of our student teachers come and go, or we have lunchroom helpers. So when the parking lot's full, they end up parking on the grass there. So we'll have to do some work with that.
Well, and it didn't really grow last year because we had no rain.
Yep, exactly.
So I was thinking, it might be a good extension, because I do know we've had that comment just between staff parking on the street and because of the amount of student teachers and in and out people we have. But I was wondering if that was an extension that was made. So any other committees, policy, finance? Nope. Perfect. And then public school foundation, I think they had, who's on that one? Can't remember, Mike. Green Eggs and Ham, I think, was a success.
We did Green Eggs and Ham for 92, 94 first graders. And that was a success. We got to read them a story and everybody got socks and had a fun morning. I am overwhelmed by the abilities of our early elementary teachers to do 92 kids, 92 first graders at once. So great job to them, yeah.
And I believe a new partnership with Lunchtime Solutions helping us with that meal as well.
Yes, yep.
So thank you for those.
Yep. And thanks to Mike for being our reader. So he picks the hardest book Dr. Seuss makes to read, and he just, you know, took it out like a champ.
Fox on Socks, I didn't go at full speed, but I had just been driving back across country the day before, so I needed to slow down a little bit.
Then obviously Booster Club, having in their Hall of Fame coming up.
Yep.
And Boys and Girls Club, I know they're gearing up for summer programming. They have a fun night coming up here in April, I just saw as well. And Tutor Club is going full steam ahead, so. Excellent. Anything else? Everybody wants outside before the few minutes of sunlight left?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, well, let's move on then into our financial reports. Item A, funds. Dr., or Dr., Mr. Kosher?
Financial report in your packet. Again, I don't have a lot to highlight on there. Obviously, we're coming to the end of our legislative session for the year, and we'll get into negotiations as well. At some point, probably in April, we'll be looking at another finance committee meeting. And we'll have some discussion as to what the upcoming budget will look like at that time.
Excellent. Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve. First by Jacob?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Any future agenda items? I was curious how summer meals were coming and kind of what the plans were for that, so maybe we could talk about that in April. It should be about probably the time you're talking about anyways.
Yep.
Perfect. And then I was, as I was looking through the reimbursements, I saw the JAG. Any possibility we can get an update on how the JAG program is going at the high school?
We sure can. In fact, they're at their first field trip today, tonight. So we'll have, we'll be back tomorrow with some competition results and some things. So we'll have that ready for next month.
Perfect. Any other future agenda items? No, everybody wants out. Okay. We have our future board meeting here, followed April 14th by May 12th. We are in need of executive session for South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-24 for negotiations. I would take a motion to enter negotiation, enter executive session.
So moved.
Jacob?
Second.
Carol? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. We are now in executive session at 7:46. Thank you, ladies.